Of the design and the actual durability and quality of the equipment that is provided in these required parks.
Welcome, everyone, to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 health and safety requirements and by order of the Governor. Welcome to anyone that is joining us live on Kent TV 21 through the Facebook City of Kent page, through Kent TV 21 YouTube channel, and also anyone that has dialed in to listen to the workshop this afternoon. We have two items on the agenda today. And just to remind everyone, item number two, we will not start that until 6:00 PM because the speakers for that particular item are coming from another meeting. So we will start off with the Kent Housing Options Plan. And Haley, you have 45 minutes, but we have a little bit more time if needed. So I will let you get started.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. I'm going to turn my video on so you can see that I'm real, but then I'm probably going to turn it off because my internet doesn't tend to look too favorably on trying to do too many things at once. So I'm going to remain off here, but I've got Kim on the slides and that way we'll be in sync. I know you all are well aware of this project, so I'm really excited to get into some depth with you today on some meat that's been going into the plan. We've been working very hard on this. And so let's go ahead to the next slide, Kim. We'll just talk about what we're going to talk about. So I'm going to give you an outline of the Housing Options Plan document that we've been working on. I know you've been hearing about it for a while. It's finally taking shape behind the scenes here and will be moving into adoption in the coming months. So I want to get into a lot of depth with you tonight and then, you know, make sure that you're aware of what else is in the document so that when you have a chance to read it, you know what you want to look for and what we can talk about further in future meetings. And then tonight, we're going to focus on two of the chapters that have, you know, I think, a lot of really relevant information. Chapter four, which is all about community and stakeholder engagement. Want to talk about the public survey we did, all of this incredible work that my staff, Kayleen, has done. And then chapter five, which is like by far the longest chapter in the document. It really contains the laundry list of every single thing that we could do and our analysis of what they really mean for Kent. So I'm glad we have an hour. We may use it. We'll see. You're all welcome to jump in as much as you like, though, because otherwise I'd take up all the space and that's not the point. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide here. So this is the outline of our document. And I want to walk through what you've already seen that you may not realize you've seen and then what you would not have yet had a chance to engage with so that you're really clear on, you know, what topics might still be ripe opportunities for us to discuss, for instance, the next time I come back. So obviously, an introduction. I'm actually very proud of it, but it's not going to be there. Any particularly interesting thing there. Chapter two, you actually have seen quite a bit of because we really started with all of that Sokeo data and that comprises quite a bit of chapter two. And so I presented on that, I believe it was back in September at this point, you know, when we had kind of finished that initial look. Now, we have done a lot since then on data. Specifically, we've looked at displacement. We have a bit of information on that. And there will be some more data coming from our Mobile Home Park study, which we don't have the deliverables for yet. So there might be a few more additions there as well. We've also done a bit of a regulated housing inventory. So taking a look at all the subsidized housing in the community, kind of getting a sense for the scale of that. So there's a few pieces in there that might not be super familiar to you when you go, when you do get a chance to read the document. But you have seen the majority of the data that the rest of the document is built on. And it really does form the backbone for everything that we that we're doing. Chapter three is a policy analysis and that will be mostly new to you when you see it. So we, basically, the grant requires us to look at our housing element of our comprehensive plan. But because I am a stickler for extreme comprehensiveness, I also analyzed basically every policy I could get my hands on, including our land use settlement, the countywide planning policies, the multi-county planning policies. And just did like a really big kind of, you know, matrixing of all these policies to say, what do we have on the books today? Is it where we want to be? Is it where we want to go? And how might we want to change these things? And so the piece that you will have seen from that is we did an in-depth policy analysis on five policy areas for Sokeo. So that was a comparison between the other cities. We looked at ADUs and MFTE and these other things, if you recall that. So that piece should be familiar, but then a lot of the other analysis. I'm pleased to say that much of the of the adopted policy that we do have on the books is still relevant and is still meaningful. We have occasional policies that we're all sort of scratching our heads about like what was meant by this? Does anyone remember, you know, or why didn't we do something? Did something change since that policy was adopted? And so the purposes of that chapter are twofold. One of them is to, you know, inform where we go from here in terms of right now. But another is when we update the comprehensive plan, we're going to have a lot of a good resource here for changes to the housing element that we would recommend that makes sense within the context of what we've learned since the last comprehensive plan update and what this plan will point us towards. So it's basically a really giant document puzzle that we're trying to lay as many clues and groundwork in as possible to make them all line up and all make sense, both now and in the future. So for the true policy wonks, you'll love that chapter. And for everyone else, you know, you won't miss a ton if you decide to skim it and focus more on some of the other chapters. Chapter four, we'll talk about tonight. That's engagement. Chapter five, that's the meat, as I described, of all the housing strategies. And then the last few are really a bit shorter. The funding mechanism slide. Funding is actually a strategy, but we decided it kind of deserved its own realm so that we could really get into discussion of the pros and cons of different funding mechanisms. And I can give you a sort of real quick spoiler alert on this one, which is that, you know, the funding mechanisms that had most promise, I really focused on the big ones, not like any individual tiny fee that we could do because I was really thinking about things at scale. And most of the things that scale scaled best when we work with Skip. So you will see some discussion of like pooling versus not pooling and kind of capacity needs for that. And we could talk about that more if it's interesting to folks. But it's a relatively short chapter because there's really not that many large funding mechanisms that are available to us. So we talked about the sort of sales and use tax. And I've had a ton of help, of course, from Human Services and Finance on needs. So we talked about REIT and then we talked about sort of what Skip is already planning and how we might best engage with that work. And then chapter seven is really your classic goals and policies. If you've read planning documents, you know, there's often a chapter just for goals and policies. So that's what chapter seven is about. That one's, we're wrapping that up now. And once we have it complete, we'll just sort of put all the actions that were identified into a timeline and that's implementation plans. So I do think that we're going to have a lot of the content be familiar to you because of this presentation tonight and what we talked about last time with middle housing, which is such a big strategy. But keep these things in mind. If you've just heard things that really interest you, you know, when we talk about next steps at the end, make sure to let me know so that we can bring back, you know, discussion items that are really what council most wants to get into. So let's go ahead and jump to the next slide and start talking about outreach. So the outreach chapter has a few pieces that I'm not going to touch on tonight because one was already touched on, which was these development community focus group that we did as part of Sokeo. So that is summarizing the chapter. And then also, as I mentioned, the Mobile Home Park study that's going on right now, that includes a ton of outreach and that's not complete yet. So tonight, we're just going to focus on the like very K-HOP specific outreach that Kayleen and my staff are working on. And I'm so remiss that she's not able to be here tonight. She, I think, caught a cold. So she's sort of available with with me with teams where she's tuning in because she just couldn't bear to be away from it. But I'm going to present for her so you're not hearing her coughing. So she has just been working so hard on getting folks engaged on this work. And I'm really proud of the work that she's done. So I'm really excited to share it with you and hopefully I'll do it justice, even though this has really been her baby. So we're going to talk about the methods, which were public meetings, survey, and then some focus groups. And we're going to go into some of the details of what we discussed in these various arenas because they really give you an opportunity to gather, you know, kind of perspectives in a really different way. So let's start with the public meetings. We held three live public meetings over Zoom. And the first half of the presentation was sort of educational material, similar to what we did with council last year of like housing data, housing need. What does AMI mean? You know, discussion of rents and incomes and that kind of thing. And then we talked, we started introducing the concept of middle housing. And we talked about how we think that middle housing is really promising and that we wanted to get into more detail. And really, the point of the detail was to spark discussion about it, to get as much input as we could. And, you know, we welcome all kinds of inputs. It didn't have to just be on middle housing. But let's go to the next slide so you can see kind of the the focus of our conversation. So we gave them these visual preference polls where this is a scenario of like within a single-family neighborhood, what could you imagine being built in a way that feels like appropriate and comfortable? And the most common options chosen here were A, B, C, followed by E and F. So it's actually, there was quite a bit of variety. And discussion with the groups in general, you know, we talked about sort of style and density. It sort of seemed like style was more important than density. And so that really speaks to the need for those design standards, ensuring neighborhood compatibility and scale. And overwhelmingly, B cottage development in Kirkland was very popular, which is not surprising. Everybody seems to love cottages and we haven't had cottages in Kent. And it really, you know, makes you wonder if there's a way to update our codes to attract this very desirable housing type. You know, I think in general, they look like single-family homes. So it's sort of not surprising, right? And the important thing here was not which options they chose necessarily. That tells us something, but it was really more about the conversation than it is to. So let's go to the next one, just so you can see the other one because we wanted to focus on both within single-family zones and then also along busier streets that were outside of downtown. So sort of along, you know, potentially transit corridors or non-downtown busy streets. And so here, options C, E, and F were chosen the most. There's less of a range, so there's a little bit more unity about that. And this prompted some really good discussion about multi-unit properties without garages. So, you know, of course, there's going to be this issue of how many people will still have cars in these types of units? If people, you know, would live in units without off-street parking, you know, do we think that people are able to live without a car? And we actually had some people on the call who said, I will never live without a car. And some people who said, I'm doing it now and it's possible. So it was like a really good range. And again, design elements came up and open space was mentioned as well. So I see there's a hand up. Councilmember Thomas, did you want to ask a question about these?
Thank you, Haley. And thank you, Madam Chairman. Maybe Bill could refresh me too a little bit. I don't know if Dana's still here or not, or if she's still. We did a deal on cottage housing and we had two areas approved. One was right across from, be north of the skate park up on 116th. And I think there was six acres up there that was approved for cottage housing. So it didn't go through for a number of reasons. But we went on a tour and we took a little kind of a bus ride to some of the cottage housing in the Seattle area. It was pretty interesting, actually. It's expensive and really made for like teachers, lawyers, mostly professional-type people, single mostly, and then they had a community garden in the middle. Bill, does that bring a bell at all? Were you with us?
Yeah, I do, but I don't remember the outcome. I mean, Dana might know more than I do. I think at any day, we do have that space, but there hasn't been a big demand for that, as far as I know.
That's, that was, I think, the biggest problem. And I know that 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 whole acreage deal leavers on that and they sold out to another development of a different style too altogether. So anyway, I just.
It was a bit of a swing and a miss, I think, for Kent in the past.
I think so.
Right. And so we're aware of that. And, you know, I think demonstration ordinances, you know, have a bit of a, an expiration date. And so, you know, we're wondering is, I mean, we, you'll see that it's not a high-term priority because we agree that I don't think the demand has been, you know, it has been evident enough to say, oh, yeah, we could get this built tomorrow. But, you know, we do hear from the community that it's a desirable look. And so we want to reflect that, you know, maybe there's opportunity there somehow, some way. Councilmember.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, I would be really interested in how much it wasn't demand versus, you know, I think consumer demand is one thing. And I hear the demand for that type of cottage housing and that price point in housing. So I'm curious how much was consumer demand versus builder willingness, I think, is the other part that I would question is, was it really more that builders weren't, hadn't evolved their their thoughts yet to that type of housing versus really truly there wasn't a consumer demand?
Yeah, it's a great point. And I think it also, the complexity is only increased by the fact that the lot sizes, you know, we might not have as as large a lot sizes that are available now as they were then. And so if we take a look at cottage housing as part of, for instance, middle housing, you know, the likelihood that you could fit cottage housing development in a single-family neighborhood is probably nil because the lots are just too small. And so we may have missed the moment where, you know, cottage housing, as it was conceived a few years ago or even decades, is really possible for Kent. But it may be that some of those design considerations or layout considerations can still inform the other middle housing code that we write because, you know, functionally, these are all sort of different types of a same thing, which is smaller units, you know, that that fit in in single-family areas. And so I think there, there are, there might be lessons learned that can apply to something that's not maybe a classic cottage development. Councilmember Thomas? Oh, you're on mute, Councilmember.
There I am. So thank you again, Madam Chair and Haley. Hey, Marley, these things proved to be very expensive. They were running, and I'm going back to the time when Bill and Dana were on the council, they're running $650 to $850 in price for 900 to 1200 square feet. So it was a very bit unusual for our, like Haley says, for our Kent area at that time. Now with Blue Origin and some others going, coming in, I don't know. But she's right. I don't know if there's very much space available anymore for this. You know, they're pretty cute, though, but not practical. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. And I mean, it's, it's all relevant discussion. And I think, you know, the need for design requirements is just really obvious here. And we knew that, but hearing from the community in more specificity was was really helpful. So the groups we had at the focus, or sorry, at the online meetings were pretty small. I'll be honest, it was pretty small attendance. So luckily, we had a couple other methods going that kind of went on the opposite end of the spectrum where we had hundreds of responses and much less in-depth discussions. So we had some great discussion here, but let's go to the next slide and talk about the survey results. Because we had nearly 300, I think it was 292, yep, I'm on the slide, 292 total responses. And, you know, the spread of who responded was, you know, slightly disproportionate towards homeowners, single-family homeowners, folks who speak English and white. But we did have a little bit of diversity in our responses in terms of renters, people of color, people who spoke a language other than English. We had the website, you know, have embedded translations. So we did see that people accessed the survey and filled it out in other languages. So that was, it's good to get some of that, you know, you never, you'd never quite get to proportionality with especially during COVID when it's so hard to reach people. But I think overall, we did okay. And we have some follow-up steps that I'll talk about in a moment to try to fill some of those gaps. But some of the survey results I thought were very interesting. Again, on the left here, you see the choice of housing options. People just love those cottages. Townhomes and ADUs and duplexes and triplexes all did pretty well also, though. And priorities to house everyone was about homeownership, more footy rental housing. I thought it was interesting how much support there was for that. And units for people who are vulnerable or maybe displaced. So those were all relevant as well. My computer has frozen for the moment, but I'm going to keep speaking and assume that it's going to come back. We tried to really get the nexus of government intervention and housing affordability. So it's not very intuitive to people. But, you know, there is a relationship between the amount of regulations and then the amount of how affordable that unit is. Because if we require, you know, incredibly burdensome design regulations, you know, that can really drive up the cost of development and that will drive up the eventual cost of the unit. And so we tried our best to kind of explain that really succinctly for the public so that we could then say, are we on the right track? Do we want to require more design or less design? And I'm just confirming that I'm still here because everything on my screen is frozen, but I'm going to keep going as if I am. So we, we got a sort of middle-of-the-road answer on that, which was really good. I think that tells us that, you know, we're not being overly burdensome right now. We don't have a problem necessarily in in terms of our regulations. And we can continue, as we open up to middle housing, we can continue sort of in the way that we do now with amount of regulation. We can, we can continue our design review process the same way and just really tailor it to to the type of housing that we're building. Okay, so I'm hearing that I'm coming in clear, but I have no notes and no slides. So I'm going to start winging it. I think we can go to the next slide. Maybe we're already there. And what would it be? I'm going to psychically remember that it would be about the focus groups. So we went to, we realized there were some gaps, right? We had this big survey with all these responses, but we were not getting as many responses as we would like from younger people and from people of color. So Kayleen did an amazing job and I'm saying Kayleen here because I had conflicts during these focus groups. It was entirely her. I want to give her so much credit because she did awesome at this. We had a focus group with this group called the Sustainability Ambassadors, which is a leadership, climate change-related, middle school and high school student thing. Obviously, you can tell I'm not working for my notes right now. And we had, I believe it was five to 10, I'm going to say six, seven students with one teacher. Never been more grateful to have recently looked at the notes.
Hey, Kay, this is Kayleen. I can tell them about this as I am here. Just excuse me, guys, if I cough. So I did not want to cough while I was talking to you. But I do want to, I just want to pop in because I did both of these and I'm really passionate about the, I'm not turning on my camera. You don't want to see me. About the outreach group that we did. So the first one I did was with the Sustainability Ambassadors. And it's a King County-based program of youth, but there are surprisingly overwhelmingly amount of Kent students there. I was incredibly impressed. It was six female youth of color who were all very engaged in sustainability work. And so I presented to them the middle housing information and kind of just said, let's have an open conversation about housing. And they were very honest that, you know, they've never had to think about this before and they don't have any experience in housing or the larger world, but that there were some consistent themes that they, that came up in their home lives about why they moved, why their family moved to this country, the idea of the American dream, the stigma that they felt that living in an apartment or a multifamily would have. One, one girl particularly said, like, my mom would like look at us like, what do you mean you want to live in an apartment or, you know, one of these? And so I was actually floored because I figured that the the want or thought of middle housing would be really prominent amongst these youth, but they, not so much. But specifically, I think also the subset of youth, we were discussing how they live in multi-generational housing. Many of them live with their grandparents and they're, they need larger units. And so that was something that was counter to what I had expected. And a lot of safety concerns. There's this idea that multifamily, specifically in Kent, we talked about why multifamily in Kent doesn't look like multifamily in Kirkland or multifamily in Bellevue. And they talked very favorably about. Um, and they talked very favorably about those cities, uh, versus our own city where they live. So we had some discussions about that and that was really interesting. So that was the youth focus group. I'm going to go to the next slide, Kim. The other group that I went to was the Kent Community Development Collaborative. This was phenomenal. It was so, such good feedback. The KCDC, uh, I went to them in February as a group of seven nonprofit, um, organizations that are focused on equitable community development, specifically supporting communities of color, immigrants, refugees and low income residents, um, mostly for advocacy capacities. We discussed the role of government and housing and the potential strategies that we could use to address housing capacity. Uh, specifically, the things that came up were that so many people in the populations they serve, even if there were increased homeownership programs that none of them would have access to that. Or they wouldn't be in languages that they could reach or that the city, the city's outreach wouldn't adequately reach those people. Um, and how we would want to make sure that we partner with agencies like KCDC to make sure that all of the, and all of this good anti-displacement work and homeownership education, all this stuff that we want to integrate into the plan is reaching the people who really need it. So that feedback was, was really, really good. We also talked about how their populate, that their populations have this disenfranchisement with the government and how it's, we need to make sure that we are bridging that gap, um, through our translation services, city engagement and partnerships with CBOs. And so, um, I think what we learned more about through this agency is the potential for future partnership. We talked about how this isn't the end of our engagement process, but really the beginning of years of collaborative housing work, uh, that they could be involved in. So that was really, really promising and really exciting. Next slide, Kim. And so then going back to Haley, if you guys have any questions, I can't see any hands or anything.
And I rejoined on the phone, uh, so I don't have my notes, but I can at least see the slides and I'm hoping that the notes will be incoming. So thank you all for bearing with us and thank you Kayleen. And please go, uh, take a cough drop. And, um, folks can let us know if you have questions. We can, we can come back to them at the end if, if needed. So we took all that info from Sokeo, we took all that info from the community. And we basically had this laundry list of things we might do. And the point of chapter five was to really go through them one by one and say, what would this mean for Kent? And what would it take? And so we identified what we see as those near-term, high priority, things that we want to accomplish in the next one or two years. And then the medium and lower term, uh, longer term, lower priority. And then there's also another category not shown here, which is sort of things that already exist that maybe could use some continual improvement. So, um, we're going to walk through them one by one and, uh, some of them are still a little bit in flux, so I'll touch on that. But, uh, and then some of them you've heard about. So, uh, we'll be, we'll be a little bit all over the place the next few slides, but that's because it literally was a laundry list of every single thing. And, um, there's just a ton of information on each of these, uh, that's drafted in the chapter right now. So go ahead to the next slide and, um, Kayleen just sent me the notes. Thank you so much. So, okay, the first one here is definitely a placeholder because as I mentioned, we have the mobile home parks study that's going on now. And let me just tell you briefly about that. What we're going to have is, um, an assessment tool so that we can kind of have a better sense for what's going on at our parts. Some of them are zoned for mobile home parks. They are, the zoning is, is sort of there as a legacy. It's in place. Some of them are zoned for TOD. That's one distinction. Um, some of them have a lot of code enforcement issues, a lot of fire safety issues. Some of them don't. Some of them have a lot of really older units. Some of them have, have the newer units that are a lot safer and are built to last a lot longer. And so we just do not have, um, a comprehensive understanding of what's going on in the thirty mobile home parks that call Kent home. So the study is, um, really going to be this, this assessment tool and a sampling of an assessment. And our staff can complete more assessments, um, subsequent to this. We, we weren't able to do necessarily all thirty of them because they, they are somewhat time consuming, but we'll have a few. And then we'll also have sort of resources lists and some recommendations on policy and kind of some, some, some important findings, but they won't necessarily tell us exactly what to do. So I'm very optimistically putting this one on the near-term high priority because I'm very much hoping there are things we can do in the short term. It may end up that most of the things identified are more appropriate for medium term because they might require some, uh, you know, gearing up or, um, it might be somewhat complex or involve multiple stakeholders. So this one's a bit of a moving target, but I'm putting it up there first because I have high hopes. So, um, that's the story on that one. Um, the next one is this multifamily code calibration. And this is really about, this was an addition. So Sokeo did not identify this, but, um, because Kayleen is such a, um, policy wonk and a code wonk, she knew that we had some areas in our code that basically make it easier to build single family rather than multifamily in multifamily zones. And that is not really how things should be going. We want to sort of be maximizing density where we've zoned for higher density. So that's something we have already identified. There are some issues. We can rectify them in the short term. And a couple of these might end up being lumped together as one big project that you'll see go through later in the year. Because the next one we've talked with you already in depth about is that middle housing zoning code. So we already allow a little bit of middle housing, um, and we haven't seen a ton of it because we really haven't done a big code overhaul that says, okay, you know, where should we allow these? What should they be subject to? Should it be more similar to the single family or the multifamily in terms of design standards or parking or these other things? So that's a big one that you should be pretty familiar with at this point. And there's a lot of good information, um, in the plan about that, that hopefully builds on what we've previously discussed. Similar with ADUs. We know there are things we can change about our ADU code, um, such as the size and, um, and the height, uh, to make it easier to build. And if we are being really proactive, we might also take a look at fees. And when I say if we're being proactive, I mean, we will want to look at fees, whether or not we'll be able to make a strong argument and justification for, you know, a difference in fees from what is there today is another question. Fees are part of the issue of AD is being very expensive to build. There are many other parts as well. So, um, the, the financialization of that is sort of its own piece. But we know there are things we can do to make ADUs easier to build today. And maybe there are further things that we can explore as well. And then, um, TOD near the eye line, this is the one that is probably the least defined at the moment, but I think has a ton of potential. Because, you know, we know there's this increased transit service that is coming to Kent. That is, I believe there are, um, aspects of it that are already under construction or out to bid. I know I've seen things sort of come and go about, um, status updates on the eye line. But, you know, I think that it's safe to say that increased densities will be appropriate. But how much to increase them based on, you know, what do we think is really, um, um, going to be possible to access destinations in terms of this transit service? You know, it may not be quite as robust as downtown with sounder or light rail. I'm not sure if it's going to be the kind of service you can build your whole life around and not own a car. But maybe it would be reduced car ownership, or maybe there could be a period of, you know, leasing, uh, um, parking lots. If, if it seems like car ownership will still be high, these are the kinds of questions that would take a little while to work out. So this one probably won't be this year, but, um, I think we would try to get to it as soon as we have the middle housing code, uh, under our belts so that we can try to capitalize on this great transit investment that is coming. Um, just to note that I would not be able to see hands now, so you should definitely.
So Haley, councilmember, Ms. Doe has her hand raised.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Haley, what is TOD?
Transit oriented development. So we typically talk about TOD in the context of high-capacity transit, such as light rail and sounder. And this is what is called BRT TOD, which is a little more cutting edge. BRT TOD is a little less clear of exactly what it should be. It's not necessarily downtown level densities, but it is increased density from what you might have today. Especially because the BRT is planned to go through Kent's east till through single family zones. We know that that's not really the best use of land near such, uh, a good transit investment. But we also don't want to just go to infinite heights the way that we do downtown when you're talking about areas that have historically been single family.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Haley, what's an example of some of the, uh, fees that are making ADUs expensive?
So ADUs are subject to all of the same fees as pretty much any, um, dwelling unit. And so I think we might exempt them from school impact fees because the idea is that it's unlikely you have school-aged children. But we still charge them transportation impact fees. And we do have, you know, an updated transportation impact fee schedule that's moving its way through. And we did talk about the need to, um, you know, be really accurate with ADUs and make sure that we're not penalizing them. So, you know, you're not assuming that they will, um, create as many trips as a twenty-four hundred square foot, single family home. But, uh, those fees are, you know, are assessed on ADUs and some cities choose to waive those. There are also sometimes, um, like sewer hookup and utility hookup fees and some cities choose to waive those. But, you know, those costs are born. And so that's why it's a little bit controversial is, you know, or maybe not controversial, but it's a decision to make is, you know, how, how do you want to pay for those things if, if you don't charge, uh, someone building them? Um, I'm trying to think if I've missed any key fees. Yeah. And then there's obviously there's just permitting fees, which again, those, you know, fundamentally sort of pay for the permitting department and the functions that help make the permits go through. So, uh, again, you wouldn't necessarily want to, um, want to skip that one. I am being informed by my incredibly intelligent staff that we do charge school impact fees for ADUs. So that's a perfect example. Some school, some cities say you're probably not raising school-aged children in an ADU because it's just too small. And therefore we will not charge you school impact fees. So, uh, we haven't made that choice yet. It's a, you know, once you start unpacking the fee thing, I've heard that it can get really difficult and controversial. And I've seen this with school impact fees just generally, which is that, you know, the finer you slice and dice it, the more you start getting into sort of arbitrary, uh, thresholds. And, you know, whether or not, you know, could you raise a child in a twelve hundred square foot ADU, but not a thousand square foot ADU? I, I'm not sure that, you know, these things are really black and white. So it really is a policy choice to say, you know, yes, this might be contributing to traffic, but we want ADUs enough that we're going to give them some kind of discount on transportation impact fees as an example. Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll pay for that however we choose to pay for that. So, uh, I'm not sure that we have really reached any kind of consensus on a recommendation here. That's why it's, it's, we're, you know, we're putting it out there as part of a future project. And it's something that council should certainly be thinking about so that you can give us, uh, good guidance on what you're looking for when we come back with these projects later in the year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. Haley, um, on the ADU topic, I hear frequently about the parking, uh, requirements. Is that something that you will be, um, potentially refining it when you come back to us with an ADU?
Yes. Great question. So we actually have parking lists on the next slide because it touches a few different ones. So I'll just talk about ADUs for now. ADU parking already, we need to adjust our code to so that it's not required within a quarter mile of transit. That's per the state legislature last year, which we have not yet updated to be in compliance with. So I think then there's the broader question of, do we also want to look at that in a broader way beyond a quarter mile from transit? Do we want to consider, um, not requiring parking for ADUs, you know, across single family zones? So I think it is definitely worthy of consideration. I understand that parking can be very tight in some neighborhoods. And so that may not be popular everywhere. And we'll need to, um, you know, kind of sort through that as a community, I think, when we, when we do that project.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else on these near-term, high priority strategies that folks want to talk about?
I think we're good for now, Haley. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Thank you, Haley, for this presentation. What is considered a near-term high priority?
We're thinking one to two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So let's talk medium term, which is, you know, after that. And, um, hopefully within, you know, five, uh, to six years, let's say. I, I don't know that we put a number on it quite yet, but these are things that feel like they have a lot of promise, but they also are somewhat complex and require potentially coordination with a lot of other folks. And, um, some of them are also a little bit still placeholders. So the first one, preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing, otherwise known as NOAs. Uh, this is one that I think is likely, there's interest that, in Skip doing it. And I, I think that Skip is likely the best equipped to do it, but there are ways that we can actually support that through, um, collecting a little bit more information, whether that's through our rental housing inspection program or maybe through our permitting database. There are, there are a couple of ways that we could sort of support the, um, establishment of a database. So we could either be co-creating that with Skip or doing it ourselves to say, where is the rental housing that we have today? And, and therefore we could be identifying where there are risks of it becoming unaffordable, whether that's through renovations or sales or other things. Now, obviously just knowing about it doesn't do much if you don't also have some funding to do something about it to sort of, you know, give some assistance to the tenants. And so that is why it feels like it, it really makes more sense to work with Skip on that one because, uh, Skip will have the funding to be able to do something about some of these. And I know that it's very core to Skip's work plan to do this work for regulated housing, but that's different than this naturally occurring affordable housing. And so that's why this one is in the medium term, because I don't think that it's like in Skip's immediate next step to be creating this kind of database and starting this work. But I think they are interested and there's, all the cities are recognizing their own limitations of being able to do this without that pooled resource. So that's, uh, the first one. Culturally specific support is, um, one that we sort of touched on when we talked about the outreach that we did. So, um, you know, I think that Kayleen and I have really recognized and human services staff have also recognized this for years, that we call it the Bermuda Triangle. There's a bit of a disconnect between the partnerships that the human services staff have with community-based organizations. And the more policy-oriented work that my shop is doing, which, um, you know, if I go to a community group and talk about something happening 20 years from now, I often feel like, um, kind of a goof because they have, you know, more pressing things that they're working on, but they're still interested in that longer term. And we, we kind of, there's a bit of a, of a, of a gap, um, that, that Marina and I are sort of often reaching across. So our goal with culturally specific support would be to try to bridge that gap a little more through, um, our department, our division, taking a little bit more of a proactive role in, uh, building on the relationships that the human services staff have today or forming new ones if there are other groups, that we could be sort of evaluating, um, you know, these different communities and neighborhoods and identifying, you know, who might be especially vulnerable to, um, being either displaced or negatively impacted by housing policy work. And who has the interest and capacity in actually engaging in that longer-term planning and policy work? So, um, this could also include something as simple as, um, translation services for some of the resources that we are aware of that maybe not are ours, but we know the languages that are spoken in our community. And we can maybe fund the translation of some of those resources, um, to be able to better, uh, uh, connect our community to them. So those are some examples of what we're thinking there. It's ongoing. And what's exciting to me is just that, you know, I think human services staff and our staff have long wanted to work together and we have worked together in small ways. And I think this is really setting us up to work together in a bigger way. Now, of course, this is going to be limited by staff capacity, by which I mean, you know, Kayleen and I have a lot of other, uh, much drier reporting things that we have to do for the state or the county. And, um, you know, we have, we have a whole lot of other duties that are going to make this not necessarily possible to be our central focus. But that said, we do have, you know, the ability to, um, add this in to our work plan. And if, you know, if there was interest in expanding this with added staff capacity, we could really, you know, have somebody who stands firmly in the Bermuda Triangle rather than us always kind of reaching across it. So the goal here would be to set ourselves up to better connect our communities to the resources and the policy work that we're doing now that, um, you know, is just, has been sort of piecemeal or, you know, once every so often, we could really be having a more continued, uh, thread with these organizations so that, uh, they are, have, have a lot of, a lot more capacity to help us, uh, help the community through different housing issues. Um, tenant protections, this one is also a bit of a placeholder because I'm waiting for some information from legal, but I understand that council has directed staff, um, to work on some near-term things. And we also know that there's some pending legal decisions happening in adjacent cities. So that's why this one's sort of medium term, because I think there are some shorter-term things that might happen soon, but there's probably also some longer-term things that we might be waiting on other cities to see what happens there. And, um, really we're, we're following laws lead on this. So they're doing more analysis now and depending on what they get back to us, uh, this one could still move around. Middle housing incentives, this would be a situation where, let's say we enabled middle housing and, you know, we did this big code amendment and then we didn't see a lot of new development. Now, everything in the data tells us that middle housing should be financially feasible right now. But if by some, you know, um, opposite of miracle, I'm not sure what the word is for that, by some problem, uh, it, it's not penciling out, we could consider it's things like density bonuses or, you know, take a look at the design review, um, requirements that we put in place and see if there's a way to streamline those or potentially again, like parking requirements, those can, can be a hindrance. So basically, you know, you could just call this iterating on the middle housing code, but I, I put it here as medium-term priority because rather than just iterating, it could be a more proactive, aggressive choice to say, okay, we already, you know, passed it and now it's been maybe three, four years and we haven't seen, you know, any permits or we've only seen two. Let's, you know, really beef this up and really go for it. So that's, that's the option here. And sometimes, you know, incentivize versus, um, remove barriers that can be a little bit fuzzy of like, well, you know, it, do, basically are our regulations doing their job? And if not, are there things we can do to offset? if not, are there things we can do to offset that if we really can't change the regulations themselves for some reason? So the last one here is this reduced parking requirements. Wow, I'm seeing that we are definitely going to use them full hour. So that's good. Reduced parking requirements. As I touched on regarding ADUs, thanks to Councilmember Larmour's question, it touch, it relates to ADUs. It also potentially relates to middle housing because, and this is one of those things that Kayleen knows way better than me, there's something where we count the garage and dry, we only count the driveway and not the garage and single family. And so there's a way that, that basically, we have a choice of how we count parking in middle housing, whether we count the driveway and the garage versus having a garage covenant. If you have questions about that, I'm going to ask Kayleen to take a cough drop. But the other question would be parking related to multifamily i- in proximity to transit. So, you know, right now, we've seen sort of things play out in downtown with parking. We have a little bit of findings there. We'll see what happens in Midway in terms of how much parking gets built and then utilized. But in the medium term, we could be looking at all of our parking regulations and say, saying, you know, what is the market going to build? That's one piece of info. But then what do we need to require to sort of protect the public interest? That could be a different answer. So that one touches on a lot. And I know it's also a little bit touchy with the, the community because looking for parking is one of the seven circles of hell. So that's why that one's going to stay in medium for now. And it, but it does have a few items that touch on the near term as well. So are there any questions on the medium term ones before we go to long term?
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Thank you, Haley. First question, naturally occurring affordable housing, how does that, how does that happen?
So much of the housing in Kent could be considered naturally occurring affordable housing. What that means is according to the definitions of affordable, which is 30% of your income, you know, monthly, compared to the area median income, which obviously is very high in King County, are you paying what's called market rate or are you paying something less than that? In Kent, a lot of the housing is less than market rate because we are in the lower cost area of an expensive county. So basically, what this is trying to get at is that we have a lot of housing that is providing an important level of affordability for the county. It may not be as affordable as any particular resident wants, me included, but it is providing a level of affordability and it's generally between 60 and 80 AMI that, you know, that does not happen naturally in Seattle, right? In Seattle, everything that gets built is 100 AMI. And even older buildings are still 100 AMI. Everything that's built is probably 150 AMI, you know? So it really speaks to the fact that we have an older housing stock. We have, you know, a slightly lower quality housing stock than some of the other areas of the county and that, that is providing a necessary piece of the housing puzzle that we don't want to lose. So that is the point of that strategy.
Thank you. And the second is more of a comment on culturally specific support. I mean, I think I've mentioned it before, that I myself live in a multi-generational household. That's what I grew up in and that's how most of, naturally, our community, we're the most diverse city in the country. So a lot of our community lives in a multi-generational housing. So I think, I think should be a little bit of a higher priority considering how divorced of a community we are. I understand all the other priorities are very important as well. So I just kind of my point of view there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
What did you mean by the garage covenant?
Oh, I was afraid you would ask that.
No, no, it's fine.
Thank you, Kayleen.
So we have a, there's some interesting little tiny pieces of our code which can be a little confusing. And one of which is when you construct a single family home and you look at the parking requirements, the garage doesn't count towards parking stalls, but every single family garage is required to have a 20 by 20 parking pad in front of it. So those, that counts as two stalls. Since we don't count the garage, that means every single family house has two stalls. But if someone wants to build an ADU, they have to provide a third stall. If we allowed them to count the garage, they would have four by default all the time, how every single family house is built. So that's a little confusing. It's just a way, honestly, it just could, that could be a change in how the code is written to allow the garage to count towards parking. Something similar happens with duplexes. So duplexes also don't have the garage count towards parking, but all of the multifamily properties in the parking code, there's a footnote that says that the garage can count if you have a parking covenant. Basically, the goal of that is, is that, I know my garage isn't used for my car. It's filled with a bunch of stuff and maybe one day I may get into a gym. But if you're willing to actually say you're going to use your garage as a garage, then the parking in front of it, you know, like then it should be able to count towards parking. And I think that that's just, it's a very small but simple explanation of how we have these little holdovers in our code that if we change the way it's written or change the way we interpret it, it's not really going to change what's happening in reality, but it'll, it'll change what's allowed. Does that make sense? I know it's, I know it's confusing.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. And I think the point there is that, you know, we want to make sure that when we write our middle housing code, that, you know, parking is going to be an issue for these sites that are sort of small. And so we want to make sure that we're giving these sites every opportunity to be, you know, to, for construction to be feasible. And that means making sure that, you know, they actually have the ability to count where cars can be as a place where cars can be. So I think it will really help the sites pencil to be able to build middle housing, which might be, you know, a little bit squeezed on some of these sites. So we're a little bit low on time, but we're almost through it. So
Councilmember Larmour, really quickly, sorry Haley, Councilmember Larmour, did you have a question about the medium priority?
I just had a quick comment about the parking. Like, the way it was presented to me was that right now I could have a teenager living at home and parking their car on the street, but they could move out and I can't move my mother-in-law into an ADU and have her park on the street because the ADU is actually requiring another pad.
That's a great example.
So that was just, that was an example. I came in one of the affordable housing meetings and I thought it was a good illustration of what that restriction really means in reality.
Super good example. Thank you. I'm going to remember that. Okay. So let's bust, thank you. Let's bust through those last couple of slides. So the first two things you're seeing here are basically funding. And as I said, we, we went ahead and put those in a new chapter to just say, here is, you know, the situation on funding for these different funding sources, whether it's revolving loan funds, new sales and use tax funding, how we want to spend things. And we can go in depth on it in another council meeting if, or another workshop, if that's interesting to folks. But we consider them long-term low priority because really, this is where pooling with Skip is so important. And that is something that's happening now. It's happening in the near term, but I think it will probably be a while before Skip is really set up to be dispersing funds. And it's basically a long game. Funding is not something where, I mean, even if all the priorities I just named, if council decided in your infinite wisdom to give me a giant budget to do all those things, I wouldn't actually be able to do it because the, the administration of funding is, is its own like capacity issue where, you know, you have to make criteria and make it really fair and track where the money went. Did it go where we set it? Didn't, all these things. So we really went pretty much all in on pooling with Skip for these different funding sources, which means long-term involvement, long-term participation, long-term engagement between us and the other Skip cities and the Skip organization. So there's more details in another chapter that you'll, you know, you'll be able to get into when we publish the plan if you're interested. And if you are further interested, then we could talk about it more at another council meeting. But that's the kind of quick, a quick explanation of those two. And then density bonuses, we stuck here because it was really shown that they didn't have a lot of success in Renton as part of the policy analysis we did for Sokeo. And in addition, they just don't work super great with our code because our code is already pretty favorable. So this was one of those ones from Sokeo where it was like, well, I guess it couldn't hurt, but we don't see it as really high opportunity. So let's go to the existing continual improvement ones. These should be pretty familiar concepts. Our rental housing inspection program, you know, I think there might be ways that we could iterate on that in the future. We have a few details on that. TOD exists, our zoning has existed for a while in downtown. We now have Midway as well. And, you know, we can consider changes there, expansions as time goes on. Capital plan alignment, this is really just making sure that you're investing in ways that supports your housing goals. So I think this is something that already happens informally. There's, you know, maybe some opportunity to formalize it, but it didn't seem like something that necessarily needed a whole huge effort so much as just continued engagement between many departments on capital planning decisions, which happens today through a couple of different means. And then MFTE, which I know council is familiar with, we'll probably be iterating on this if the bill that's working through the legislature passes. And, you know, we can always continue tweaking it. And there's lots of information in the plan about, you know, kind of how we're doing today with the, what we might change in the future if it doesn't get used and different things about working with the legislature on that. So moving kind of faster, but that's because we're running out of time. Let's go to the next slide. Next steps. We made it. So right now, the draft of the plan is working through internal review. I've been just bugging the heck out of my colleagues and they've all been really gracious about taking a look through all this writing that Kayleen and I have done. Once we have that, you know, a little bit more with the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, we'll be publishing it for public review. We'll make sure that council has a chance to read the whole thing. You can take it on maybe a spring break vacation if you do that sort of thing during COVID. And then the mobile home park study will be completed next month. And so my thought, if, if council's interested, is that we could go in depth on that at our workshop that we have scheduled for April 20th. We won't have necessarily every deliverable worked into the plan by that date, but we will have the majority of the work done. And we should be able to talk about our findings and what they mean and how we want to work them into the plan so that we can work through the adoption process in May and finishing in June. So we have been working with Lanyson Planning Board, we'll continue that, sort of a parallel to council, and we'll be doing the public hearing with them in May. And then we'll come to the committee of the whole. So as, it was felt like a long schedule a year ago, but now suddenly we're like nearly at the end of it. So I really would love to hear in these last four minutes, if council has priorities for that April 20th workshop date that you would really want to discuss with staff. Besides, hopefully you're interested in the mobile home park results. And if there's anything else that you've heard tonight that you want a lot more discussion on, I think that would be a really good opportunity. So thank you so much for your time and attention on this. And my apologies about my technical difficulties and thank you for listening. I'll stop talking.
Thanks Haley. I was seeing lots of heads nodding when you talked about bringing that, that information back about the mobile home study and information. So looking forward to seeing that. Anybody else have any other questions or comments for Haley in the last couple of minutes? All right. Haley, thank you so much. Oh, Councilmember Cor.
I was just going to say thank you Haley and Kayleen for all the work you have done. It was great to see all the information that you have collected from the community. And thank you for all the work you're putting into this because it's so important.
Thank you. And thanks everyone. Really appreciate it.
Take care, Kayleen. I hope you feel better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a couple more minutes. Mark, I think you're going to be presenting this next one. And I don't see, do we have any sound transit folks here yet?
No, no, Council President. I'm, I have one ear on the Federal Way City Council Workshop and they are just wrapping up. So I'm just going to wait for them to come on and then introduce them. So they should be here very, very shortly.
Okay. I was going to say two minutes isn't very much time, but if you needed to turn your camera off and step away for a minute, feel free to do so. Just come back within the next couple of minutes. Looks like our council members are coming back. So, Mark, I'm going to leave it up to you when you're ready to go ahead and get started and introduce any of our speakers that have
Oh, I'm going to go ahead and get started if you'd like, Council President.
That would be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council President, council members. On March 5th, Sound Transit published their draft environmental impact statement for the operation maintenance facility south. And tonight, to give us a overview of what was in that environmental impact statement is Curvy Hawkins. Curvy's the project director for the operation maintenance facility south, as well as the project director for the Tacoma Dome Link Extension. So Curvy, if you're ready to go, go ahead, take it away.
Curvy, are you there?
I am now here. Hello. Just got logged in.
Great. My name's, and I'm Andrew Austin. I'm the South Corridor Government and Community Relations Manager. In addition to Curvy, our project director, Chelsea Levy, our South Corridor Development Director is also here to help answer questions. So with that, I'll kick it over to Curvy.
Thank you for the introduction, Andrew. And I was supposed to introduce, apologies for getting a lot of it in late here. So we do have a quick presentation. I understand we're under a tight timeframe here to get us through here. So I will go through this rather quickly and I guess to hopefully some Q and A at the end if we have enough time there. So we can go to the next slide. Thank you. And so our goal here today is to talk about the draft DIS, which we published on March the 5th. In this draft DIS, it's for the OMF South. So we're going to talk more about the facility, talk about the three alternatives and talk about the, the, the takeaways that have come out of the draft DIS, which is currently out for review and comment at this particular time. Next slide, please. So first, just going to the OMF South itself, just a reminder what this facility is. It's a facility where our link light rails will need to go. It's for cleaning, storage and care. It's a 24-hour-a-day, 365-day operation. It's one of four facilities planned for the region. We are going to need to store 144 vehicles there. And it's going to support our regional system and create 470 jobs. Next slide. And so as mentioned, it's one of four facilities that we're going to need. It's, it's, the OMF South is going to be for our southern region. We have an existing central facility located just south of downtown Seattle. We have one about to be open in Bellevue. And then we need a fourth facility on the north side of our system as well, which we're early in trying to identify a location for. This facility needs to be strategically located in South King County because we need to be near an active light rail line, which is the Federal Way Link Extension. And that's to make our, make this facility efficient in operation as well. So strategically, South King County is the best location. Next slide, please. This final graphic kind of talks about the story of our evaluation process, which started about three years ago through early scoping, working with the public. We identified 24 sites. And through a combination of pre-screening and the alternatives evaluation, we got down to six sites, which we took into scoping. As a result of scoping and public comments, our board identified three sites, which we studied in the draft DIS, which is now out for public review. If you can go to the next slide. So this identifies those three sites that we studied in the draft DIS, the Midway landfill, the 336th Street alternative, as well as the 344th Street alternative. Next slide, please. The OMF South, as previously mentioned, will employ 470 jobs. And these will be new hires and essential jobs. So there won't be a remote workforce. These positions need to show up. The staff need to show up and be on site. It's, they're needed there for the critical operation of our light rail system. It's showing up every day. Obviously, it's going to be a benefit to the local businesses and economy. And these positions have our living wage jobs. So the average salary, for example, So the average salary, for example, at our existing facility, wage is $40 per hour, or approximately $83,000 per year. The OMF South will also have a training facility. And we are in conversations with King County Metro to explore the development of apprenticeship program as well, to get local residents into these high-paying union career jobs. Next slide. This shows some of the jobs that will, the types of jobs that will work at the OMF facility. Largest group are light rail vehicles and light rail maintenance workers as well. And then we have the outside apprenticeship possibilities, as I mentioned, but there's also this opportunity for the internal promotion through these suite of jobs as well. So the possibility to start out as a vehicle cleaner and then eventually, you know, move into a vehicle maintainer, which is a higher paying position and requires more skill. That just provides that great career opportunity. So once you're, you know, employed here, you can use this as a career position for you. So, you know, great opportunity to grow and develop staff on site. Next slide, please. Looking at the draft DEIS, EIS itself, so it's a draft environmental impact statement, released on March the 5th. And it, it is completed under the State Environmental Policy Act. And Sound Transit is the lead agency. It's done under CEPA because we're not seeking federal funds for this project. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates what's being studied as part of the OMF South DEIS. So we're looking at impacts to transportation, the impacts to the natural environment, such as low-income and minority populations, which is studied in the document, hazardous materials and economic impacts as well as the impacts to the built environment, excuse me, in the natural environment, I should say, such as wetlands and sensitive areas. Next slide, please. So now we'll talk more about the key features between the different alternatives. If we can go to the next slide. These slides do have common features, so regardless to which location is ultimately chosen as the site, we will need to have storage for 144 vehicles. We'll need an operations and maintenance building. And this is where we provide space for our light rail vehicle maintenance, repairing, cleaning, parts and supporting administration. We would need a maintenance-of-way building. This is for maintaining and repairing our light rail facilities, such as our stations, tracks and signals. And then we'll need a link system-wide storage building as well. This is a centralized location for receiving materials and parts that are used to maintain our guardways and stations in light rail vehicles that are deployed throughout the region. Next slide, please. So looking at each of the sites, starting at the Northern Mount Site, the Midway Landfill Alternative, located at the landfill, located between 246th Street and 252nd Street, between I-5 and SR-99. It's on 68 acres. And, you know, this facility is going to be, if it is identified and selected, it's going to need to connect to the Federal Way Link Main Line tracks located between the Midway, the landfill and I-5. The construction of Federal Way, the Federal Way Link Extension is under, you know, construction right now, scheduled to be open in 2024. And that project will not preclude the selection of the OMF South site at the Midway Landfill. So we'll be able to connect in. However, the construction of this connection could impact the federal investment at the Federal Way Link Extension. So if that's the case, Sound Transit, we would be obligated to reimburse the federal government for the value of this impact. And at this point, that value has not been calculated. Looking at the next slide, please. Because of the unique nature of the landfill, in addition to the above-ground facility investments that are required, we also needed a strategy and investments to address the ground settlement. So we're gonna need to manage the contaminated material and address the ground settlement, which is the most significant risk for the OMF South, OMF facility over time. Settlement could cause the OMF tracks and other equipment to get out of alignment, which could then impact operation of the light rail service. To prevent this, we're considering three below-ground design methods to prepare the Midway Landfill for possible OMF construction. And so you can see those different design methods here on the screen. The construction, one of which is the construction of a concrete platform. And that would be supported by drill shafts over the entire landfill. Another option is a hybrid option, which is consisting of a combination of excavation of the contaminated debris and a platform that would support the buildings on the site. A third option is a full excavation of the landfill debris, which would be backfilled with new and reused soil. Next slide, please. So to get to the Federal Way Sites, if one of them are selected, we would need a mainline track to connect to one of those sites. The mainline in this example is shown in green here. So this would be a mainline track that would be built as part of the Tacoma Dome Link Extension project, regardless to which OMF South alternative is selected. So to reach either the 336th Street Site or 344th Street Site, which I'll talk about in a moment, we would need about 1.4 to 1.8 miles respectively of this mainline gateway to be built in advance. And again, this would be built regardless to which site. It's just a matter of do we build it early to get to the Federal Way Sites? Or do we build it after, along with the regular TDLA Link Extension? Next slide, please. So looking quickly at the Federal Way Sites, 336th Street Alternative there. It's on 59 acres. It's just south of 336th Street. And this would require that 1.4 miles of connecting mainline. Looking at the next slide, please. And then the 344th Street Alternative, again in Federal Way as well. This is about 65 acres and this one would require that 1.8 miles of connecting mainline to reach it. Thank you. So now we'll talk a little bit more about the actual results of the draft DEIS, some of the findings from that DEIS, which is now out for comment. Excuse me. Looking at the first two graphics here is the displacements of residents and businesses. The Midway Landfill has no resident impacts. The higher impacts are 344th Street Alternative. And then business displacements at the Midway Landfill 4. Those are located primarily on KSR-99 side. 344th has the most business displacement. Next slide. Looking at community and social resource, none at the Midway Landfill. There are three churches at 344th. And then 336th has the one big church, which is Christian Faith Center. Employee displacements, Midway is 43. The biggest is at 344th. 344th has the higher number of businesses, thus the higher number of business employee displacements because it's an industrial area. Thank you. The, as far as eco, eco system, ecosystem resources, 336th and 344th Street Alternatives would have greater resource impacts. Because of the nature of the landfill, there's no longer sensitive areas at the Midway Landfill. However, sort of in that South King area, there is the Hollobos Creek System. So you can see those impacts are higher on those sites that are in the Federal Way area, including on the wetlands, forest lands and streams, very minimal at the Midway Landfill. Next slide, please. The Midway Landfill Alternative would take the longest to construct from between six to eight point five years compared to the Federal Way Sites, which are about three and a half years. The Midway Landfill Alternative is longer because of the below-ground site preparation that's required. Looking at the daily construction truck trips, the Midway Hybrid and the full excavation options do require quite a bit of trucking of debris in and out of the site to prepare the site itself. And, you know, there's known contaminated materials on this site as well. So this results in considerably more daily trucking trips on the local roads than I-5 than compared to the Federal Way Sites. And the examples that we use to understand the equivalency of the amount of debris being hauled is about 900 Olympic-sized swimming pools. Looking at the annual operating costs between the alternatives, pretty much similar between the three. However, there's the additional operation cost at the Midway Landfill just due to the heightened risk of multiple weeks-long partial full closures over the 100-year facility lifetime due to the potential impacts of ground settlement causing, you know, track and electrical power infrastructure to get out of alignment. And these closures could have potential impacts to the services in the region as well. Next slide, please. So this slide summarizes the conceptual cost estimates for the three alternatives, including the design options at the Midway Landfill. These costs are represented in a range to reflect the preliminary level of design and planning that has occurred. The red line here communicates the amount of the OMF South currently in the Sound Transit financial plan. These estimates are to be used to compare the alternatives and they do not include the costs of the TDLA mainline connection to the sites in Federal Way. The Midway Landfill overall has a higher conceptual estimate than the Federal Way Sites. And this is due in part to the below-ground infrastructure that's required for the site far to the facilities that will be built on top. So it's really that prepping of the site that drives the cost differences for the Midway compared to the Midway Landfill Alternative compared to the Federal Way Alternatives. Going to the mainline information as well. So just as a reminder, we do need to construct this additional mainline tracks to get to the South 336th Street or South 344th Street Alternative. And these mainline tracks would be built as part of the Tacoma Dome Link Extension, regardless to which site alternative is selected. So the comparison that you see on the screen here is not comparing the sites. It's really comparing the two mainline alternatives to reach to those, those two sites in Federal Way if we need to build this mainline track early. But they will eventually get built as part of TDLA regardless. So looking at the sort of differences between those two mainlines, residential displacements are pretty equal. One additional business and additional employees because the 344th Alternative is slightly longer than the 336th Alternative. Next slide, please. Looking at the eco resources impacts, wetlands are similar. Slightly higher force impacts for 344th, slightly higher stream impacts for 336th Street Alternative, as you can see. And then just regarding the cost of the mainline track, that one is shown that the cost alternative is higher for the South 344th Street because it's longer farther south. So the mainline would be longer to get to it. So the 336th Street Alternative is 230 to 290 million, while the 344th Street Alternative mainline is 330 to 470 million for the mainline cost. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew now for the last few slides.
Thanks, Curvy. Just a few more things to note on our public outreach and the timeline for this project, if you can go to the next slide. So we sent a mailer out to all the property owners, businesses and residents with half, within half a mile of all three sites. We emailed our listserv, sent press releases, did print and digital media ads. And we're scheduling and are doing property owner briefings and community listening sessions throughout the corridor, really just trying to get the word out about this DEIS process. If you can go to the next slide. So we're in the middle of the public or start, started the public comment period right now, which ends on April 19th. We'll have two online meetings and hearings, which I'll talk about in a second. And that will all build towards the Sound Transit Board choosing a preferred alternative in the summer or fall of this year. And after they choose that preferred alternative, that will inform the final EIS, which will be in the middle of 2022. And then in mid to late 2022, the board will select the project to be built. And these timelines could shift due to Sound Transit's financial realignment process. Next slide. And just really the focus right now, along with that outreach I mentioned, is making sure folks know about what's happening with the, what's in the DAS and know how to comment. So one way to do that is through the online open house, which has a lot of the information you heard today, as well as a comment form. It's also translated into Spanish, Korean and Russian. We're having two virtual public hearings and we'll go what normally would be in-person hearings. Ones in the evening and ones in the afternoon. Where we'll inform folks about the project and also take verbal public comment. And then folks can also email, send a voicemail or mail a comment to comment on the DEIS. So that's a quick run-through of where we're at in this process and we're happy to take any, any questions if folks have them.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank the three of you for being here today and also spending some time with council members prior to this meeting so that we had an opportunity to see these slides and ask some questions because I think sometimes that little bit of one-on-one is also really important. So thank you so much to all of you for taking that time to be with us. Councilmember Thomas, followed by Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm curious about Christian Faith Center. I had thought that they had moved the whole operation to a new campus in Federal Way. So is that just empty now or is it in use?
That facility's in use and it's one of the, in the slide Curvy talked about for community institutions or religious institutions, both in the 336th site, that would be a displacement for both the school, the school and the church at 336.
So what has Casey Treat said about all this? Any information there?
We've just kept him, them and the Christian Faith Center informed in the process at this point. We haven't gone into the details of a potential acquisition because the, you know, we have to wait until the board selects the project to be built.
Of course, but they must have some input.
Yeah, they've, they've, you know, we've, they haven't given us indication about how they feel, but we're keeping an open line of communication for sure. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Andrew, that was a good political answer. You should run for politics. I like that. Hey, just joking. With that said, I'm just curious on the job creation. There was quite a few jobs up there, right? Is all those jobs gonna be paying at $83,000 a year or just that top one, the vehicle maintenance? They might have been a top one.
So that, that's the average. So some will be higher and some will be lower. And, you know, it depends on, on your folks, what the job folks are doing. One thing that, you know, that King County Metro, who, the bulk of the people who work at this facility would actually be employed by King County Metro, who runs our trains. Important thing we've been talking about with them is in addition to potential expansion of apprenticeships towards these jobs, they also do a lot of internal mobility. So folks who come in as a vehicle cleaner, which is a lower paying job, might work some time and then train up to become a mechanic or something else. But that's the, that's the average.
They are union jobs too, right, Andrew?
Yeah, they're union jobs. Most of them are part of the King County Metro ATU. The super, the Sound Transit and Metro, you know, supervisors wouldn't be in, but the vast majority of those jobs would be union.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Lamar.
Thank you, Council President. So Andrew, I know I brought this up in our, in the previous meeting we had about the brownfield development and grant opportunities there for money. Is that being factored in not just financially, but also in, does it meet any of the community development or equity goals, environmental goals for Sound Transit? environmental goals for Sound Transit? The type of, you know, redevelopment opportunity that Midway alone presents?
Chelsea, can you jump in on that one?
Your question is, I'm sorry, I guess I, could you repeat that?
So does the brownfield, you know, the, the opportunity to redevelop a brownfield, you know, you guys had said you were dubious or weren't sure if there was any financial benefit to it, despite some programs I've seen out there. But I'm also wondering too, is there more of just, does it meet some of Sound Transit's environmental or development or equity goals? Or is there anything around that brownfield development that would be an advantage to the Midway selection?
So in our environmental analysis, that we've identified potential environmental impacts of the OMF South, and on the landfill, because it is already, there are no, there are very few, if any, wetlands or streams that would be impacted by the OMF South. The, the sites in Federalway have a higher environment, are impacted more greatly in the environmental impact category, in the natural, natural environment category than the Midway site, so that, that is one measure, and that's how that, that's the area in which those environmental impacts are measured, is within really the, those stream, impacts to streams and wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the previous slide, would you just remind me, please, what is the timing as far as, so it's summer and fall of 2021 that you would be letting everyone know what site was chosen?
So the, the 2021 decision will be after the DEIS, you know, comment period is over, there will be a summary document that's given to the board, and it'll be public. And then later this year, the board would make a preferred alternative decision. So that is an important decision for the board, but by no means is it a final decision. It just indicates where the board's heading going into the final DEIS. But the final decision wouldn't be until after the final environmental impact statement, which is scheduled in 2022.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Chelsea, a few days, a couple of days after your, after I met with you guys, there was an article that came out on brownfields, and it was very favorable for brownfield, brown, brownfield development. So if I want to make sure, and I know you guys probably already did see that, but I want to make sure you guys have seen that. Should I forward that through Kelly or send it directly to who?
You can send it to me or to Kelly, to me, and I'll make sure the team has it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you again, Kirby, Chelsea, and Andrew for joining us today, and again, spending time with us prior to this, so that we made sure we had enough time to get through this presentation, and then also get all of our questions out to you, so. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, council members, that brings us to the end of our workshop. That gives you a little bit of time between now and when we come back here at 7:00 PM for council, looks like we're about right on time this evening. Go take a little bit of a break, and I will see everyone back here shortly. We are adjourned, thank you.